Good lunchtime afternoon. Welcome, you'll be the special call to board meeting for July 27th. This time I'll turn it over to Dr. Spence and Dr. Whitehead for the COVID-19 update.
Good afternoon, I guess it'll be official now, the afternoon. We, as we did last year, we continue to monitor conditions in our area, look at the guidance that is shared with us from the variety of sources that we continue to get. And we've come up with a framework that is similar in the structure as to what we had last year, but some of the pieces that we have revised are based on feedback and based on the ability to be able to move and make adjustments as we need. Just to give you a little bit of context before we talk about the structure, Glenn's seven-day rolling average right now is 27.1 and our community transmission rate is 309. Last year at this time, our community transmission rate was 643. So we're in a very different place, you know, from those numbers than we were last year. We had seen our spike last year. Our positivity rate for testing is 3.7, so it's below 5% right now, and that's remained steady for a couple of weeks. And so we've taken that into consideration, also looking at our summer programming. So we really ramped up summer programming this year to include the traditional high school credit recovery and initial credits. And so we had in the neighborhood of 250 high school students coming in for that. We've had band camps, we've had athletic practices. 21st Century programming has been going on all summer at the two Boys and Girls Club sites, Cheryl Thomas and Brolle's Mallett. And we've had over 150 of our elementary students participating in that ongoing. And they have all followed our lead, which was Dr. Spence's recommendation that masks be optional after the last day of school. So in those settings, masks have not been required and we've not seen any, you know, increased transmission or anything among those students that have been participating in those activities at this point. So we've taken some of those pieces in addition to the other information to come up with a framework. And I've provided you each with a copy of the framework. And what'll be familiar is the color coding from green to yellow to red. What we've changed this year, what we'd like to propose is to make decisions on where we're operating based on a percentage of positive COVID tests. So instead of necessarily looking at what's happening around us, looking at our own numbers and looking at the impact that our decisions are having on our students coming to school. And so the rates that you'll see have to do with either a certain percentage at the school, so an individual school. And if that school is experiencing a particular issue with COVID, then we would ask them to move up a level at that school site to increase restrictions that they would have in place. We discussed that we would have them make that move for two weeks and then at the end of the second week, review where their statistics are at that time to determine whether they would remain at that current level or be able to make a step down at that level. The statistics would be gathered for the week and by noon on Friday, there would be a decision made as to what level they would be operating on for that next week. So that could be communicated to families to know that there may be a change at that particular school site. You'll also see there's a percentage for the system, so that if the system were to ever reach the percentages that we have reached level, then we would go into protocols that we would require and have in place at every one of our school sites. But based on where we saw things happen last year, just because we saw things happen in one particular geographical area of the county, it didn't mean it was happening everywhere. And so instead of having blanket strategies, we thought it might be more effective to make them site-specific. So that the people in that community living in that geographical area would have a context because they would know that things are happening around them and that would be the need for the increase in safety protocols at that particular site. And so I don't know if you have any questions about that particular proposal of using the percentages to make the decisions about moving up and down.
I don't have a question, I just have a comment. I think it is a common sense approach. Last year we didn't see, as we've talked about before, transmissions between or within the direct contacts that were quarantined. And so we were operating based on what was going on in the community, but that wasn't what was going on in the schools. And it restricted the schools from operating under more normal conditions. So I like the approach of looking at it this way and having that cut and dried number and an evaluation every week to determine if things need to change in the individual school. So thank you for that.
Do we ever, I've got just a couple of questions and you may not have the answer yet, it's fine, it's just items of information, I guess. But do we ever determine how many, I know, I think the last time we spoke, we had about 500 total staff members that had been vaccinated. Do we know what that number is today? There's no real way, I guess, we could track it over the summer, but I was just curious about that if we do. But was it about 500 out of 2,000, give or take?
We probably had gotten a little closer between 550 and 600 by the end of the year that we were aware of.
And another thing is, I know that our nurses have become trained to give the vaccine, but is there any possibility of us getting tests at the school to be administered? Or were we doing that? I mean, I don't know if that's something we'd be even interested in doing, but...
I think there are a lot of, I think you would open up Pandora's box a little bit of that.
I understand, yeah, sure. I just popped my head so...
Yes, and without having a lot of other pieces in play, I don't know that that would be something that we would want to jump off into at this point.
And also I'd like to state that using the percentage rate, we're basing this stuff on facts and not fears. So as long as we keep the facts in the foreplay, I think we'll be okay.
Okay, thank you.
And last year we kept numbers each day. This year we'll keep them each week and then we'll leave the positive tests among staff and students. And then when we get to a certain point, if we do get to that point, then we will move to a more restrictive environment.
And one of the things, you may be familiar with the preventive measures that Brittany created for the webpage last year. It was a one-pager and it had these same symbols on it, but it was just in general what those were. So she's taken the framework that we've got proposed for this year and made it so that if a parent pulls this up and their school is in green, they have a one-page reference point of these are the things that I can expect. But if we're in yellow, this is what I'm looking to make sure is happening at, you know, for my child before they leave home. And so I think that'll be another good reference tool for families to have and those would be posted on the website as well. So in considering all the information we have at this point in time, we would at this point recommend opening under green. And that would mean that masks would be optional. They would be, you know, recommended certainly for anyone who, you know, wants their children to wear masks. There's not going to be anything to prohibit that. And the only place that we would have a mask requirement at this point would be on buses traveling to and from school locations during the school day. And that is primarily because we can't always have that three feet distancing that we need, even within all the recommendations for elementary schools to have that three-foot distance between people on the bus. We can't always get to that point and so if they have masks on, then we feel like we're putting that layer in. But that's the current recommendation that would be coming along with looking at opening under green.
So... Was there any time last year that we would be under yellow or red, do you know?
Under, in some school sites, which is why we wanted it to be site-specific. So we would have had some school sites that would have operated under yellow, but at no time based on what we saw would we have. And we did keep that in play last year, that we could have closed and had targeted closures, but we never reached any of those levels last year.
We were very close after we came back for Christmas.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense.
But there were three or four times that we would have had to go to yellow in certain school sites.
I guess how long did we operate in a possible yellow, would you say, on those site-specific schools?
I think at most we may have had one or two schools that we would have had to carry those beyond that two-week into possibly the third week of, before their percentages would have dropped back down. And part of that had to do with just multiple, you know, that rollout effect of exposures. But for the most part, schools would have been able to have that two-week restriction in place and they would have been able to level back down.
So just in general, the green category, because I don't know that this is available out there right now. It talks about masks are optional, but you know, some cleaning procedures. It mentions one thing about consider the need for nonessential visitors. So I wondered, parents, particularly elementary school parents, you know, like to go into the schools and drop off. Is that going to be allowed under green or...
I think under green, yes. I think we would just always, you know, take into consideration someone that's not a parent or otherwise as to what their need to come in. Because they could be coming from an area that has a high, you know, rate of transmission. And depending on how much information that person would be willing to share with us about their vaccination status or those things, like a consultant or somebody else like that coming in or a presenter.
Okay, yeah.
Menors.
Yes, menors.
And so it also has, you know, specific recommendations for buses and cafeteria too. So cafeteria would pretty much return back to what we've seen in years past under green, the buses with the exception of the masks. So it's somewhat normal, would you say, in green, okay?
I think it helps us, you know, begin to make the shift of learning how we operate, you know, with this in our existence, you know, rather than, you know, feeling like we can capture it in some way and do something else with it. How can we just move forward with operations and return to instructional practices that we know are most effective for students as well?
Right. We did see some learning loss last year, so that's always a consideration too in working through the plan, so, all right.
Are there any other questions concerning COVID in our procedures?
Just one quick question, do we, how is our mask supply, like if we want to keep disposable masks on buses and that sort of thing? Are we sitting pretty well? Do we need to make a push to ask for community support again or, I mean, are those at...
I think right now we're sitting pretty well with the disposable masks, but we certainly can, we have, you know, we could use COVID funds to get some more if we need to.
I think, and this is just an aside, it's just not, it may not directly relate, but I'm a part of a Facebook group with, you know, parents at University of Georgia. And you would be amazed with the learning loss at college this year just because of all the things they went through. I mean, so many kids that were straight A students and honor students and AP, so many kids lost hope and Zelle this year just because it was that difficult. I mean, dozens and dozens of, and I said that's, there's no telling how many. And it doesn't necessarily directly relate here, but it's the same kind of, same kind of issue. So anything we can do to keep the kids in school and in class, I'm 100% in favor of. It was a huge issue, not just, not just locally, but...
I've had several teachers approach me this summer and say how hard it was to teach with a mask on, especially when you're teaching reading. Because you can't see the child's mouth and they can't see your mouth when you pronounce the words. You know, you start looking at second and third graders who are trying to learn how to read and write and perform mathematics and they're falling behind. You're talking about lifelong issues, not just one or two years for those kids.
Well, and I think we've talked about the socialization development for those younger children too, was more difficult last year. And that's just as important really as the academics we're teaching, so...
And I think y'all did a great job last year of keeping a running total of what our cases were per week and making that available. I don't know if it's, if it's not overly burdensome, maybe we could do that at the school level too, have a banner on everybody's homepage, you know, are we green, yellow, red this week and what our numbers are. If it's not too much trouble for them to do it site-level and system-wide.
Yeah, that was kind of our plan.
Just right there when, as soon as you log in. I mean, you don't have to search for it, it's got to be right there. That'd be huge.
Now, we're only going to keep positive COVID tests, we're not going to keep it quarantined.
I understand, that's fine.
One more quick thing. For us, I know we've discussed yesterday, to and from school, masks are required to get on the bus and to board number. During school hours, if they're going to a field trip or if a tennis team's going to go play, they're not required at that point.
The problem is that is, say the bands, okay? The band, they're together pretty much all the time. But when we pick kids up in the morning, they're coming from everywhere. That band is together all the time and they're going to get on the bus and go to Douglas, Georgia. That is a long time to sit there with a mask on. And so they're already in class, they're already practicing band together, you know. Being on the bus is not going to make that much difference, that's why we decided to do that.
That's fine. And certainly... We can always reevaluate what happened.
But it's certainly, no one's telling those students they can't wear a mask either.
Right.
They're making it optional.
I'm sorry I'm late, but as you may or may not know, the hospital is being very inundated. I know, perfect bad timing, but anyway, I'm sorry I'm late and that's why. We have bigger numbers right now than I've seen since last year, so...
Any other questions for Dr. Whitehead or myself?
Can you please, and I'm sorry, but I think you would rather me do what I was doing before I got here. But I kind of need, if you don't, just a down and dirty a skinny, I don't want, need 15 minutes worth of just, if, this is the only, what are we planning to do the first two weeks?
We're planning to recommend, recommend that they wear masks, but we're not mandating.
Okay, I disagree with that and I had a feeling, was that, no, I'm okay with that. I understand y'all's decision, but I disagree with that because we need to start out safe and work our way to opening up to this. I like this, I think this is us being proactive. Camden County and also Savannah are both starting out with masks on. We started it before and it followed us and I think that we are okay. I know our community is pretty irritated and will be mad at me and I'll get even more emails, which is fine because I'm not acting as a parent, I'm acting as a medical professional, I'm seeing what's happening in the hospital. If the next board meeting you want me to fill it up with medical people, I have already got the go-ahead from the CEO to bring some people down to talk, I don't mind. I think it's important to wait at first and I know there's people on the board and I know and love them and respect them. But in this decision, I think the best decision is to start off strong and work our way back. I wouldn't have said that two weeks ago, I promise you I would not. I saw this the very first time you sent it out and I'm like, that's good, I like that. And then what has happened in two weeks is significant. We are one of the 20, we're right by one of the 20 counties in America that are showing the worst spikes going on. So there's a lot of issues going here and going around and if I don't speak up, I would be not doing justice to the profession that I'm in, nor would I be doing justice to my position here, which is to voice my opinion with the best things that I can. And I'm so sorry I'm late because I really would rather prepare just a little bit more, but it's been that busy. People have been working weekends to include management staff, so you're working seven days a week, 12 hours a day. It's like that now. There's a hospital in Jacksonville that has 25 ICU admits and they have two nurses taking care of it. I know that doesn't mean much to you if you're not a nurse, two-to-one ratio is at best what you do in an ICU. Then it turns into danger and there's more than 10. So it's headed this way, Camden's been inundated, we're having lots of issues. I do like this plan, but I would like to start with coverings and I know I caught, I'm so sorry. But I would, don't have a problem making a motion to do that. And after we finish talking and when we return to open session, I'll make a motion that we do that. And if everybody decides no, it is up to the board, it's not my decision, but I'm voicing my opinion in a very quick manner that give it two weeks and then go from there. I know it's sudden, I get it, but it has been two weeks of explosion, so that's all, I'll let the rest go.
The only problem with starting with masks and saying we'll back off is that we never did. We had every opportunity last year to start backing off and we never did, John. So I mean, I understand what you're saying, I get, I mean, I've got friends, I've talked to people in Statesburg and Savannah and people that have been at concerts and things that have gotten it. Saying, I got a friend in the hospital in North Georgia right now, but the issue with starting with masks is that, I mean, we can always ramp it up. It was just, we all kept saying, well, we've gotten this far, let's just go the rest of the way and we never backed off. We never returned normal, we had every opportunity to do so. And we owed it to our students, to our teachers, to our parents and everybody as a stakeholder in the system to back off and we didn't do it. And so there's no way that if we start this way that we're going to back off, I don't think. So I hear what you're saying, but I think you can always, you can always go, I think you can always, you can always follow this. You can always shut a school down, you can always shut a wing down, you can always shut two schools down if you have to. But I think to, I hate to sort of penalize, but to penalize and to hold back the instruction and again, the interpersonal and those things because... And I know, and the issue, John, and I know you know this, and I have respect, which y'all do, I mean, believe me, I mean, I owe the medical profession with the life of my child, you know, I really do. And I trust you all and I believe in it 100%, but you do see the worst of the worst, you know, and then so, I mean, look at all, nobody else has a mask on in here. I've seen like, as I've been around town, you see, you see some sprinkling of some people starting to wear masks again and that sort of thing. But I think if we, if we stay committed to what our plan is, I think hopefully we'll be okay. And if we're not, we can always back up and punt, but I think starting out might be a mistake because we'll never, we'll never turn it back around. We didn't do it last year and we wouldn't do it, we wouldn't do it this year either.
And I respect your opinion.
So will that first Friday, after we've been in school four days, will that be an evaluation date? That'll be our first one?
I would think we would go ahead and start so that people have an idea of what that's going to look like. You know, we would certainly take into consideration any problems that happen at that point.
But I will implore our parents, what, you remember what happened? I mean, the first few days of school last year, people that had symptoms were sending their damn kids to school. I mean, don't be ridiculous. I mean, you know, if you have symptoms, stay at home, please. If this is going to work, we've got to, you know, apply some common sense to the process. So parents, please, you know, if there's any question, please keep your child at home.
Yes, screening at home is essential.
Huge. Keep a thermometer by the door, you know, and check every morning, not that big of a deal.
Thank you.
Next is the renewal of Achieve 3000, Dr. Green is not here. And so Achieve 3000 we use in our middle and elementary schools for reading. We're going to use, Dr. Green wants to use that at the high school level so we can work on our reading efficiency there. Also, this will include Overthought Point because in the past we have used Title I monies for this. So we've increased Achieve 3000 and we're going to pay for it with CARES Act funds for the next three years.
Do you want to hit on our TAM update before we go to that?
Okay.
Or do, I mean, I'm asking if you want to do that before we hit the bottom title, go ahead and get Mr. Blackaby.
Mr. Blackaby? Yeah, I skipped over that, sorry.
I thought you did.
I was rolling.
Good afternoon.
Good morning.
Had three items for approval. Oh, you were talking about Al Tamal. Al Tamal.
Wasn't on the agenda, I was going to skip over that.
Al Tamal, we have tentatively scheduled for Thursday of this week to get a temporary certificate of occupancy for the classroom wings, which are, their complete teaching material is already in them. So if we can get that certificate of occupancy, Thursday, we can start allowing teachers to get in and set up their classroom. The, all trades were on, we're at the site this morning working. We're, the fire alarm throughout the building should be completely operational by the end of the day. All kitchen equipment should be operational by the end of the day. The, probably one of the biggest things that people notice when they come by, the front door has not been on, the building is still plywood on the front door. The front door's going up today. It was off because we were still pumping concrete into the courtyard, which that all got worked out yesterday. So the, all the glass and the door will be, is in the process of being installed today. So once that's done, the remaining tile work at the front entrance will be done. The, one of the lingering things that are going to occur is the metal on the outside of the building is still, some of it's still in shipment and is not here. Some of that is on site, so we won't have all the, definitely will not have all the metal installed. The gym, we've put in on the back burner until we get the rest of the building up and operational. So it will, it will lag back a few weeks. And in the office area, we're having an issue with countertops. We just got notified today that the countertops may not arrive until the middle of next week, but we can, we can come up with a workaround for countertops if we can get the, get the building open. In a nutshell, that's where we stand right now with Al Tamal.
And we've moved the teachers from Golden Isles into the old Al Tamal too, so we're ready there.
Yeah, everything's essentially moved except for the office materials at both schools. So we are, we're just waiting for all the, all the final work to be complete so we can occupy the building.
Any questions for Mr. Blackaby?
Thank you for pushing it through under less than ideal...
On top of it.
I hope everyone doesn't think that, you know, it's all going to be grass and flowers and all that stuff when they pull in the first day. So we need to make sure that we are putting a word on the street that, I mean, our guys are doing everything we can, they can do and including the trades. I mean, we're fighting in my business and the trade industry come all over. You can't get material, you can't get, you know, the individual pieces that you need. You can't get material, you can't get, you know, the individual pieces that you need. So I completely understand as far as the, where you're at, you know, as far as fighting that type of stuff. But it's gonna be a work in progress. I think the main thing is that you did what you said you were gonna do, and that was, either classrooms ready, get the cafeteria ready, or work on the front part. But I think they're gonna be in a much better place, you know, within four months after things get rolling.
So Mr. Tooten and I, we do have a meeting at four o'clock today with Bryson McDonald from McDonald Construction, just to go through, you know, we're kinda on a path right now of daily reevaluating the schedule. So at four o'clock today, we're gonna go back through it one more time and see, you know, make sure that we have everything accounted for that we need to get that certificate of occupancy, so...
I just wanna assure everyone else also that we wouldn't open it if it wasn't safe. I mean, the school's gonna be safe, and, you know, the kids will be fine. It's just gonna be some, you know, aggravation as far as folks still being there working, you know, while kids are attending class. But again, I think we're considering what we were fighting as far as the steel and all of the stuff that we were short. We're in a good spot, so thank you, and thank the guys for all they're doing to get us in that position.
Just stay right there. Any other questions? Mr. Blackaby on Al Tamal. All right, let's go to, let's go to Achieve 3000. So, we're going to pay for Achieve 3000 out of our CARES Act funds instead of Title I, and that would allow us to give Glen Academy, Brunswick High School an Oglethorpe Point ability to use Achieve 3000. Any questions about that?
That's a three-year deal?
Yes.
And just so everybody knows, Oglethorpe was using it. In the past years, they just had to pay for it out of their own funds, so it's not a new program for Oglethorpe.
It would be new to our high schools, but the students have used it in the past.
Yeah, I'll entertain a motion for the recommendation to approve the renew, renewal of Achieve 3000 for three years for eight-hundred-and-thirteen thousand, four-hundred-and-two dollars.
I'll make that motion.
That's all right. Ms. Gibbons? Second, please.
Second.
Dr. Jurgen, who's in favor? unanimous?
Mr. Blackaby, you talked about Brunswick High School.
Yes, I was asked to get proposals for, to pave the back drive, essentially coming off of Haversham behind the outfield, the softball field, leading to the back gate near the fieldhouse at Brunswick High. Any of you who travel on that road, you notice it's, the pine tree roots and potholes have made it almost where people beer off of and drive in the grass rather than driving down the driveway. So, we did advertise on Georgia Beakerman Registry, as well as website, Brunswick News. And we did make contact with R and R Cleanup about getting a price on that. In the end, they're the only ones who submitted a proposal, and it was in line with what we anticipated it being. Our original number we threw out there was around sixty thousand dollars, what we were thinking it was gonna cost. We did add on taking down a couple of pine trees that were causing the issue, as well as adding some speed bumps. And so, our recommendation is to, is to move forward with R and R, doing that work.
So the proposal is still at sixty thousand?
Sixty-four thousand, seven hundred, yeah. And we can work with them around their schedule, we talked with Mr. Turner about, because we'd like to get this done as soon as possible, but with school starting, it's only gonna take a few days to actually do the work. But we, we'll need to work out a plan with him, just doing the best time that he can allow us to have access to that road.
We can shut that down at the fieldhouse, so we can work on it without students being able to get through.
We talked about this a long time ago, and it was kinda one of those projects that was, might have been an add-on if we had enough money in these spots. But Al was working on trying to get numbers on repaving the actual parking lot at the gym at Brunswick High. Don't know if that's something that was on y'all's list still, if we had extra money, because it needs it badly, too, and it's restriping and stuff, and...
What I would like to do is, once we get this road connected, and then we find out where all those underground water things are, come with a road that connects the bus road with that one, and then come off the back of Brunswick High and have a pavilion where the, our special needs students can get off a bus there and walk into the building, so they don't get wet, or it's not a hundred degrees out there. And then maybe make as much parking behind that gym and in front of that gym as possible. Because when we have a Brunswick Glen Academy baseball or softball game, there's no parking. So that's the plan, you know, going the next year or so.
And then also, the other, although it's still, you know, you still travel fairly well, it appears the bus drive over was not paved during the original construct, or the original construction of New Brunswick High. It still appears to be the old drive from the old vocational wing that was at the old baseball. So, all that does need to be tied in together eventually, but this section here is basically impassable at this point.
It also separates the traffic from everyone going to Al Tamal, the students that live on this side can go that way.
I didn't wanna, I just didn't wanna lose sight of it. If we've got bigger plans, then that's fine, I don't rush, I don't rush and pay for something if we have, you know, future plans for changing it a little bit.
There's some engineering that needs being involved in paving that chapback part, and we don't wanna rush into that one. This is a pretty easy job. Recommendation is to award R and R Cleanup a Darian, an amount of sixty-four thousand, seven hundred dollars to pave the road we talked about behind the softball field at Brunswick High. I entertain a motion to approve that, sixty-four thousand, seven hundred dollars.
So moved.
Second, Ms. Sam, second, Ms. Gibbons, all those in favor? It is unanimous.
Press box.
Press box, I was also approached about doing something to dress up the outside of the press box primarily. Originally, we discussed painting it or providing some other type of material on the outside. If you, if you look at the way the structure's built, and the height of it, painting would be a costly endeavor and that, but it also would not be a very long-lasting endeavor. And then also, there's some cracking and some patchiness occurred on over the years, so it probably would not be a very aesthetically pleasing solution in the end. So we looked at some different options as far as EFS panel, panels, you know, engineered panels, or stucco, which would also be very expensive. So in the end, it was like wrapping it in metal panels is the most, most cost-effective manner to dress up the outside of that. And that would include taking off that vinyl siding on the front and making it all one uniform look on the outside. And that cost doesn't, it does include putting a color band around the middle to kinda break it up, so it doesn't look like a mobile home sitting on top of, on top of the stadium. So the same thing we advertised, we talked to a couple of different vendors in E and O, and Prision was the only one that submitted the, a proposal. They're also one of the few that had the manpower and the equipment available, and could get the materials in a reasonable amount of time to perform the work. And that's a hundred-and-twenty-four thousand, four-hundred-and-fifty-four.
And is it just aesthetics, or is there a instruction?
Well, it's, there's also, if you look at the back, and you can see where the water has, somewhere along the way over time, the eave drip on the back somewhat clipped, so it's got water staining coming down the back. So it would be to address some of those. We also want to be able to frame the windows. We're not gonna replace the windows at this time, but in the future, if we come back, those windows are the original windows. But framing it such a way, we can come back and easily replace those when we, when we get to that point of needing to do that. So it is aesthetics.
So it'll be a metal outer structure?
Yeah.
That'll get loud when there's a kick game going on.
Yeah, well, most of it, it would be, the vinyl siding part would be the only part that they could get to, just as they are now. But yeah, you're all right, it'd be quite a echo.
Hit it from the radio, guys.
So the recommendation is to approve Owens and Prisions, Inc. of Brunswick for one-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand, four-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars to fix our press box.
So moved.
Leaned by Dr. Jurgen, second, please.
Second.
Second, Ms. Gibbons, all those in favor? Unanimous?
It's not unanimous. Thank, or, it's not, yeah, I'll vote against it.
Six, six one.
The juror HVAC.
This was something that Mr. Boudreaux had started before he left, and I kinda took it up after he departed. But the HVAC units, the wall mount units at Goodyear, the majority of them are all the original units that were installed there during the renovation, which occurred almost twenty years ago at this point. They're in horrible shape, several of them are not working at this point, so we need, we're gonna do something to address them as school starts. They're rusted through, compressors are falling out of the bottom. And so, our proposal is to go back and return with the wall mount barred units. Mingled Doors is the sole source for that. We did do some preliminary pricing on some other options, and the barred unit was a couple hundred dollars cheaper than any other option for a wall mount unit at the time. We, that both I and Al had gotten some preliminary pricing. So, our proposal is to go with Mingled Doors for the purchase of barred units at a hundred-and-seventy thousand, eight-hundred-and-eighty, I believe, is the total.
And are we gonna install those?
Yes, it would be in-house work, yes.
Are they available, the ones that we need to replace right now?
When we got the proposal, yeah, um...
Do you, could we get, is everything gonna be up and running?
We have, we've been able to take some off of some, well, like St. Cyrus Elementary.
St. Cyrus, I got you.
The board was there, we were able to steal some units here and there, off of other places where we're replacing them to get us... We may have one issue with a unit that we're still trying to resolve. These units, as of last check, they were available within six weeks, for the entire shipment. We may be able to get some. Mingled Doors has a pretty big footprint, so they do have buying power, they can get things a little bit quicker sometimes than others.
And being that they're the only source in our area, maintenance is not an issue?
Well, we maintain them, but a lot of the parts would come from Mingled Doors. But you can, barred units, you can get parts locally for those, from other vendors, where there's other... There are similar wall mount units that take the same components.
Gotcha.
When will you install them, Mike?
When? We can probably do, you know, three or four a day, once they get in, so it'd be over the course of a few weeks. But, so as soon as they get here, we'll prioritize the ones that need to be installed first and start going.
So they just may be without air for that day, or?
Yeah, it is, if someone could be done over holidays and stuff, such as that, too. But yeah, it's only, yeah, a couple hours at the most that we could stack it.
Put your both kids around, too.
It's, it's a, once you get the equipment there, that's the, staging is the, is the longest part. Once you get your equipment there, it's a pretty quick change out. All right, the recommendation is for Mingled Doors of Savannah, with an amount of one-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars, eight-hundred-and-eighty dollars, one-hundred-and-seventy thousand, eight-hundred-and-eighty dollars for the Goodyear HVAC.
Entertain a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Recommendation, Ms. Sam, second, please.
Second.
Second, Mr. Halsey, all those in favor? Unanimous?
Mr. Daniel out there?
Thank you.
Andre's gonna do it, okay. It's Andre's, man.
Shelley's not here, so I can do the equipment surplus. It's basically just a bunch of old equipment in the kitchens that needs to be surplus, so that they can try and sell it, or just recycle it.
Any questions?
Questions on that one?
Surplus.
So, Mr. Chapman came last Friday and delivered the digest to me. And it came in, we budgeted four percent increase, and it came in at an overall four-point-nine percent increase. I kinda highlighted the areas, you know, as we, as you know, the motor vehicle that's being taxed by millage rate is going down every year, so that went down almost twenty-nine percent. And then timber went down. And then there, of course, the biggest offset to the real property increased seven-point-one-eight percent, but the biggest decrease, increase to the exemptions was offset the real property inflationary values of eight-point-seven-six percent. So that's why we only recognized a point-nine increase over what we budgeted. Fam- old, famous old Senate Bill 486. The next attachment is the rollback rate, and I was hoping that it was gonna be a lot closer to our current millage rate, so that we might could roll back a little bit. But I'm, I've talked to Dr. Spence, and we would like to leave the millage rate the same. And you know, when you, even though you're not raising the millage rate, you have to advertise that you're increasing taxes, because you're not decreasing the millage rate to offset any inflationary value in the digest. So, the rollback rate, the calculation is actually fifteen-point-seven-six-six. And if we did roll back, we would have to decrease our budgeted revenues in the general fund by one-point-two million. So I would like to recommend leaving the millage rate the same. The extra point-nine percent and the increase in the values would generate about six-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand dollars in additional revenue to the general fund. Any thoughts on that?
I think I said it last year, it's an increase in taxes for anybody that, whose value had increased, not for anyone whose value remained the same.
That's right, if it's not your primary resident, you don't have Scarlett Williams, then if you have a vacation home, and your value of your vacation home increases, then you pay more in taxes. Those of us who live here and have Senator Scarlett Williams, your property value is frozen, and there is no increase in taxes. Unfortunately, when we advertise in the paper, we're not allowed to put in the advertisement any of that information. So it looks like we're raising taxes on all homeowners when we're not. Then the next, the last attachment is what the notice actually has to say, and that's, you know, right out of the Department of Revenue handbook that you have to follow. So as you remember, you have to have three public hearings. We have to advertise a week in advance, and I already talked to the paper, and they will let me put the ad in the paper Thursday, so that next Thursday at the work session, we could have a millage rate hearing at twelve o'clock in the afternoon, and then one at six o'clock following the board work session, because you have to have at least one of the three at six PM to seven PM. And if you have two in the same day, the first one can't be after twelve. And then we could have the third and final public hearing on August the twelfth, at whatever time you wanna have it at, lunchtime, four-thirty, five, six, whatever, and adopt the millage rate.
So August tenth isn't available, you have to have them spaced out?
No, you have to have advertisements a week in advance. And a week apart to hear it, so...
Don't forget, you do not need a part.
No, not for...
You do not need a part for those in Camden Town.
Just the last one.
Just the last one to vote.
Right.
So what, any thoughts, leaving the millage rate the same, the dates, I'm proposing, the times? Four of you available on the twelfth at what time?
It's a Thursday.
Yes, sir.
Lunchtime.
Lunch.
Lunch is in noon?
It is in noon.
So that's what we're doing, noon, August twelfth?
Whatever works, right, I mean, you know.
May, may wanna do it at twelve oh five.
We know, we know, hey.
So the recommendation is keep the millage rate the same, is there any discussion, or? I guess we'll bring it, I'll entertain a motion to keep the millage rate the same.
Are we voting on that? Yeah.
Technically, I need to have a majority, so I can move forward in publication.
Advertise.
And advertise, otherwise you gotta start over. If we come next Thursday on the fourth, and somebody decides, they vote it down, then they have to start over the whole process.
Make a motion, we propose to keep the millage rate the same, so we can advertise.
So the motion.
Motion made by Dr. Jurgen, second, by Ms. Gibbons, any discussion?
Just a little tidbit, sorry. Try to be quiet, my monkey. The, you have taken us through some pretty rugged territories, and if you come up with a recommendation to keep a millage rate, I'm at ninety-nine percent gonna go with what you say, because you have brought us through so much since I've been on the board. So for that, I will vote to keep it the same.
Thank you, Tom. My concerns are, you know, everybody... My concerns are, you know, everybody's talking about this CARES Act money and how we're all so wealthy. Well, that CARES Act money has stipulations to it. And everything we're spending the CARES Act money on is not coming out of the general fund. It is now all new positions that we'll have to evaluate in three years when it goes away. It's Chromebooks, it's Promethean boards, it's a bunch of educational software. It's a lot of things that we haven't been able to do, and we still do have an austerity cut by the state. So, you know, that's still there. You know, I feel like at some point, when all the federal stimulus money and childcare credit money and unemployment runs out, and everybody has to foreclose on boats and RVs and whatever, you know, I think, I feel like the economy is going to take a huge downturn. And I don't think, you know how hard it is to raise the millage rate in England County? So, that's my standpoint. I think Dr. Spence agrees.
One hundred percent agree.
Further discussion? All those in favor? Ms. Sams? Actually, I'm going to bring it back to nutritional equipment. I guess I'll take advantage to do the surplus for Ms. Daniels. All right, moved by Mr. Halsey, second.
Second.
By Ms. Sams, all those in favor? Any unanimous?
The other thing I have is personnel and executive session. We'll have to leave.
Is there any other before we go into executive session?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we wear masks for the first two weeks as we evaluate our situation, and then go to this plan.
There's a motion on the floor, can you get a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Sams. Is there any further discussion on that?
What was that motion?
The motion is.
To wear masks for the first two weeks while we evaluate, where we can even come up with these numbers, and then to follow that plan.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion does not pass.
That was an easy prediction, Dave, by the way.
I was kind of waiting for nobody to say it, Eddie. You're so good. He was going to leave me hanging. At least let it get to a vote, I was not accepting because I was going to just sit here.
We appreciate your point of view, for sure. And that time, I'll undertake, I undertake a motion to go to the executive session. Make that motion. Or? Makes the motion?
For what?
For land legal personnel. Second, please. Senator Yergin, all those in favor? Any unanimous?
Motion to open session.
So moved.
Okay. We go with Sam, Sam and Michelle McDowell. I was in favor. Back at 1:25. I approve the personnel file as presented. Motion on the floor by Mr. McDowell.
Second.
By Ms. Gibbons. Any discussion? Call those a favor. What did you announce? All right, I intend to motion to adjourn.
Same move.
We go with that, Jurgen. Second please.
Second.
Sam's. I was in favor.
She got all the seconds today.
Sorry, nobody was saying we were adjourned.